And mail to the iceberg park press, two heard times or star ledger. This meeting is being taped recorded and in the event the applicant is the services of court reporter to transcript tapes. The board requires a copy of the transcript. We'll break about eight P M. For deliberation testimony heard thus far in conference room on the first floor. Public is invited to attend, however, discussion between board members and the public is not permitted at that time. No new case will be heard up to nine P M. Red bank selling board of adjustment if maintain that policy cutoff hour nine thirty P M. Or hearings. Any applicants I heard this evening will be carried over to next scheduled meeting. Uh pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance into the United States of America. To the republic which is sand. One nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Administrative matters, we have some meeting minutes. Approved.
Yes.
Do you need to say?
Yeah, I need a motion.
But.
To approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a resolution of approval for forty East Bergen place.
Mister Chairman, this was an approval to uh construction of a detached garage at the site and construction of an enclosed front porch. And extension of an existing driveway. And the conditions of note were compliance with um Shauna's review memorandum. Confirmation that there's no further expansion or intensification of any structure on the site absent further approval from the board. Uh the garage is not to be utilized for uh commercial purposes. And the garage is not to be rented or leased to utilize by anyone other than the occupants of the single family home. Um and our standard no, no light spill over. Unonly residential style lighting shall be utilized for the exterior of the garage. And um I think you had asked that uh the applicants representatives and successor owners rectify any problems directly associated with the improvements. And then remember we have the odd little provision in our ordinance. So in the event the app in the future to repave the existing driveway in place, then in that event they shall submit itself permit for the same. Uh to the zoning office and the applicant should comply with any directive. Our friend sets forth because I think that's a work in progress.
Right.
Possibly. And um no water sewer, water service, sewer service or plumbing service to the garage. That was the gist of of the conditions. If that's acceptable, we we can adopt that.
And by make a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Back this.
All of that was.
That's a roll call.
Yes. And Tori. Yes. Raina Mass.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Benny Euro.
Yes.
Yeah, uh Sharon was absent. Vincent Light.
Yes.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
And Eugene.
Okay, and next we have the administrative approval for one twenty-one Monastreet.
And Mister Chairman, if I could just very briefly, uh uh there was an extensive discussion and you'll recall that one twenty-one Monastreet application was previously approved by the board. And the applicants have uh requested it a minute, a few administrative changes based upon uh letters that they have written. And have been uh reviewed and essentially the changes reflect uh changing uh the three uh garbage areas for three parking spaces. And increasing the size of the undersized units. You recall they had grant, they had been granted variance relief. For uh uh units, several units which were smaller than permitted. And they've now uh increased the size of those units without without increasing the size of building so as to eliminate um that variance, correct Mister McKenna?
Yes.
And then I think a a setback variance was eliminated. And um there's been a request that we administratively change uh or authorized to change. And as we discussed, there's always an issue as should you do it administratively? Should you do it unnoticed? And some of the things we look at, are they material changes? Are they, uh is it going to dramatically change the way the building looks? Are you creating any new variances? Are you exacerbating any previously granted variances? And then we had here the added uh complication of a prior litigation and the applicant. Uh notwithstanding the litigation and the uh decision, the applicant feel comfortable proceeding. Um so there was a a discussion uh about requesting administrative approval. And I believe and I'll defer that to you that there was discussion that that the board would administratively review that. Uh subject to following caveats. Number one, uh there's been no decision as to the canopy uh yet because the. Board wants to see the actual elevation of what that canopy looks like, so all rights are reserved in that regard. And um I think we're also uh confirmation that uh. The administrative change would be subject to T and M reviewing uh the revised plans so as to make sure that the revised plans are consistent. With uh the letters and information presented to the board and compliance with all prior conditions of approval. Um and confirmation that uh any change would not change the affordable housing obligations and contributions. Uh so if that's uh acceptable to the board, we can uh administratively approve that if that's. The board's desire.
We need to take a vote.
Yeah, I would authorize a vote.
A motion?
Need a motion?
I would have a motion, yes.
Okay.
Administratively uh change uh the one twenty-one plans as we just discussed and uh subject to those conditions.
Make a motion from what he just said.
And a second. All right. Uh do you want to do all in favor first or?
Sure, you can do all in favor.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the record, any objections? Or abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, and next we have forty-one reckless place.
Okay, Mister Chairman, as the applicant uh team comes forward, we're just gonna do a couple of preliminary procedural things. Uh so first up, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? All right, I don't see any. Uh Shauna, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And uh what we're also gonna do is just for the record, the applicant is La Piccolo Properties LLC. And from the disclosure, uh it looks like the principals are Dominic La Piccolo and Lucindo uh La Piccolo. So hearing those names, does that ring any uh questions or comments or concerns about conflicts or potential conflicts? I don't see any. And what we'll do is we will swear in our board professionals. So Shauna Ebanks is a licensed planner and she is the borough's director of community development. And Jacqueline Durman is the board engineer. Uh so good evening to uh both of you. If you could just raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, let let the record reflect that both witnesses have been sworn. And for the record, we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So A one is the uh development permit application and associated denial letter dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. A two is the intent to proceed dated June fourth, two thousand twenty-four. And A three is the uh plans prepared by Edward O'Neil, uh junior registered architect dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of two sheets. And A four is the review memorandum from the aforementioned Shauna Ebanks, and that's dated July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So uh good evening, Mister McKenna.
Good evening. Uh Mister Chairman and members of the board. Um if you don't mind, I'm gonna um engage a little bit of nostalgia before it's the uh. You know, this application, I grew up in the building next door. And as a child, um my father had his law, his excuse me, his dental office there as well as our home. And I looked at this structure that we're looking to replace this year. For about thirty years while I was growing up, my father and I would say, you know, it's too bad they couldn't make that garage bigger. But it only fit one vehicle. And here we are tonight, ironically, many, many years ago. And this gentleman uh has cited that that is what he thinks should be best for his property. Um really just a. The very basically. Uh facility. It'll go into, looks like a two-part garage.
Should I go a little bit closer?
I'm sorry. Um it's. I'm able to testify as to what the functionality of the existing garage switches. Um and that is the reason for um the request for the variance in this particular case. Um but I'd like to uh. My little friend to describe all this.
All right, good evening. If you could just uh uh welcome Mister Neil, if you could just state your name and uh business address for the record.
Edward W. O. Junior, sixty-five Monastreet, right there.
And do you, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yep.
And for the record, you're testifying in your capacity as a licensed architect with all licenses and certifications up to date?
Yes, also uh some of my testimony. Plan related.
And planner. Thank you. And uh you've been uh accepted as a witness before this board before, correct?
Correct.
Many times.
Many times.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to describe to the board specifically uh what your plan, uh it's comprised of them.
And these are just color.
It's showing you in into the mic because those mics are.
Other.
Right.
Enditions of the documents.
Shauna, do you want those marked or no? If they're just illustrated as.
The same.
They're the same ones. Got it. So we're okay. We don't need it.
Okay, so the existing building here in this brown color sits in the back. Building is is never designed for automobiles. It's probably only about eighteen feet deep, so the walls, it's really not even a parking space. And it's about eighteen feet wide. And again, the walls and things like that, there's no way to get more than a vehicle. And it would be a small vehicle, you know, like that. So the proposal is to replace it with a three-car garage to fit three spaces. Um this area here, which is in the red, is a surface parking space now. So at the end of the day, we have as many parking spaces as exist, except the two that are in the garage, but actually. And uh proposal is that employees will park in. So the variance is being sought are the proposed garage is seven hundred and four square feet or a five hundred square foot maximum is allowed. And that because it's a three-car garage. Um the setbacks are the side setback is proposed to be three point one feet where it be required. And the rear is five point one feet for a. Let's, the output of the building needs time. So the zoning release uh relief we're seeking. Uh assuming variance is that again, the present garage cannot fit two cars. Therefore, what we are adding to legitimate parking space to the project, which actually benefits the town from the standpoint of the number of street parking spaces.
And all three spaces will be contained in that garage.
That's correct. That's correct. Um also, the the one space here is a little difficult to navigate. Because of the distance between the old garage and the parking space. And so we're actually, by doing this, enclosing the space, it makes that space a little more usable. The spaces within the building are all ten feet long. So that will accommodate, you know, opening, closing, doors, and movement. There, the setback of three point one feet, the existing building is one point eight feet back. So we're actually increasing the setback of eight, one point eight to three point one. Three point one actually is a regulation in the building code for fire. So once you hit over three feet, the building doesn't have to have all sorts of special things done to it, prevent spread fire from this. For the neighboring property. So we're actually bettering that, which betters the health, safety. Uh the um. The foot, the five point one feet in the back from right now, it's about ten. Ducing that to five point one. And part of that reason is because of the depth of the garage needed to fit the car. So the front of the garage sits in the same location, but the back then intrudes a little bit more. However, there is a six-foot fence in the back to shield that now, and that would remain.
And Mister O'Neill, it's a fact, isn't it, that uh at thirty-three reckless, the the structure that uh built it. The garage is less than than three feet, three feet, I think it's, I think it's two feet off the property.
Yes.
And then the next one going down towards Road Street, that one is about two feet. So all of the garages in Reckless Place are within probably two to three feet of the of the line where we're actually gonna be five.
It's kind of an interesting thing because in the building code, if it's a house, it can be closer to the property line. But if it's not a house, in this case, it's not, it's an office building, it has to be further away. So if it's since those garages were all built before they're referred to into professional offices. At their time, they define that all of the buildings have a detached garage. We basically. Designed the building and attempted to kind of conform to the old house. So the way we did it was breaking down the mass into smaller elements to give actually three roofs. That go side to side, these cover that up um to go front to back, as you can see here. And then we added windows high, which let light in, but don't interfere with the bars and the use of any wall space for any storage or things like that. Uh the colors, the colors here are rendered uh on my best rent, uh effort because the. The colors of the existing house aren't quite unique, but they are a newish color, and this would follow.
So so this space above the word of a parking is gonna be, is gonna be used for storage or? I mean, obviously, it's sixteen feet high and.
And our general way. Wouldn't it just be open? Our next is open space.
Okay.
There would be collar ties, which are pulled the bill, hold the wrappers together. Those things bang your head on, you're in the attic. Uh they would be going across. And then that would all then thaw. And that that it's really just one whole space here, you can see. This is a full-size bar shown, and if you multiply it by three, the columns are here and here, so the doors can open and close. And then facing one side, there'll be windows, but not the other. And the reason there are no windows on the other side of that barrier.
The the um. I think the forty-one reckless itself is one of the best-looking commercial buildings in the whole region. And would you match the colors on the garage? That's the idea. Yeah, really terrific colors. What's the size of the current garage structure?
It's approximately eighteen feet square.
And three sixty?
This would be twenty-four by thirty-two, which is a typical three-car.
So three hundred sixty feet now.
And that just happens to fit within the three spaces that there, the old building with one space, it just kind of slides right in and go back.
Is there gonna be electric going out to there?
Certainly for lighting.
Yeah, just for lighting.
But no other utilities?
The doors, yeah. For.
Um we are, we are gonna request a water bib, which is just a hose, uh. A a exterior hose outlet. For watering. But other than that, there'll be no interior uh utilities other than the. No plumbing, no saints, nothing.
And uh reckless backs up, of course, to another very deep yard. Is that correct for a lot behind you? And what is, what is right behind the garage?
There's residence on Lee Roy, right?
Right.
Yes.
But is that towards the front?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, actually, all of Lee Roy right there, the houses are fairly close to the street.
Right.
Uh I I grew up next to thirty-four, which is. It's fair. That's that. In the pretty close proximity to the street.
Right, right. So they have those very, very deep backyard.
Yes.
Between their house and this garage.
And again, there was a six-foot fence. That's all.
Any concerns from our engineer on anything?
No, they're not increasing um purpose from stormwater perspective. Grading is the same. I don't see. I don't see any concerns in terms of grading or stormwater.
Any other questions from the board? Any question, any questions from the public on this application? Okay, close that part.
Chairman, this one pick one was here. What else could more of us to ask him as a question? I think we tried to expedite this a little bit, cover some ground, so I wanted to hear from.
Thanks. I, like I said, anybody has any questions on the board? Any comment?
Um I think the uh the somewhere in what we read, uh. There was a provision that this would be used for the tenants of the building, not for anything, not outside parking.
Yeah, it's all, it's all right.
Um just one question, a plan is that if there's potential for stacking the cars?
Yeah.
Okay, that was just a mispride typo. Okay.
No plans.
Okay, any other comments from any of the board members? Application. Any comments from the public on this application? Those public portion, anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
I'll approve it.
I'll second. Mister Kennedy.
Sure, and uh two quick things. Uh one real quick, uh. Is an interesting point. You'll be recall, we earlier tonight, we did a resolution for another garage that was over the five hundred square foot. That required a use variance because of where our ordinance is, it's red. And Shauna has to correct me like twelve times on this, but Shauna, so if it's a residential lot. And it's oh, the garage is over five hundred square feet, you would need, one would need a use variance.
That's correct, because you can't have two uh principal.
Structures.
Structures on a a residential.
So that in this situation, because it's a uh business lot, uh they need the bulk. Var, C variance relief for the size of the garage, but it's not a use variance.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's just interesting. And then Mister Chairman, the, if the board's inclined, I think some of the conditions would be. Compliance with a lot of promises, commitments, and representations the team made, compliance with Shauna's review memorandum. The garage is not utilized for living spaces. They get unnecessary uh permits. We usually have a perpetually uh. Um maintaining any landscaping, no adverse light spill over. And uh obviously, it's only gonna be one garage. You're gonna get demolition permits, demolish the one, and then it's only when, at the end of the day, it'll only be uh one. Uh obviously, it's utilized for, not utilized for living purposes. And uh as Ann, uh you had suggested, it's not used or leased or rented to third parties. It's for the tenants at the site. Uh and let's see, some of the things tonight. I made a note here to, you know, give a thumbs up to Mister McKenna for having the vision forty years ago about. Bigger.
Sorry, I didn't wait so long.
Uh right, exactly. Uh it'll be used for the employees. Uh we're gonna have the uh, the six-foot fence will remain. And uh the top uh. Quote-unquote open space is gonna, with other than the collier tier crossings, it's just open space. Uh same material, uh or that's gonna be uh, the color will match the garage and and the and the building. Uh no utilities, except for the electrical, no interior utility, except for electrical, with the exception of the hose water bib. And uh not, we're gonna clarify that it's not stack, there's no stacking parking in there. So if those conditions are acceptable.
Just no adverse effects on stormwater.
Good.
To the neighboring properties.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So if those are acceptable uh to the uh board members and the motioner and the seconder, we can take a vote on that.
And. I'm sitting coral.
Be a better, but made a month.
Oh, yeah. Eileen and then Ben. And Tori?
Yes.
Raina Mass?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Benny Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, and next up, we have two sixty-eight Broad Street.
Okay, as the applicant team comes forward, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice? And I don't see any, and uh let the record reflect that the board secretary and Shauna and I reviewed. Uh various aspects of the notice and found everything uh to be uh acceptable, so it'd be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed. Uh we will, for the second time tonight, swear in Shauna Ebanks. She's our director of community development. And a professional planner, and we're gonna swear in Jacqueline Durman, our uh board engineer. Ladies, if you could just please raise your right hands, do you swear that the information you provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect, uh both witnesses have been sworn. And what we'll do is we'll mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So A one is the development permit application and the associated denial letter that's dated May ninth, two thousand two twenty, two thousand twenty-four. A two is the survey uh prepared by Michael Lynch, and that's dated March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. A three is the sign renderings prepared by Yes Graphic, consisting of two pages, dated May sixth, two thousand twenty-four. And A four is the review memorandum from the aforementioned Shauna Ebanks, dated July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And I think that's the gist of it. So good evening and welcome.
Mister Schultz, can you just call the mic ready?
I got to. There you go.
Very close.
Yes.
Uh we're gonna have to wait. Swear.
Sure, uh if you could just state your name, please.
Robert Potterman.
And just spell your last name.
E U T E R M A N.
And your address?
This is my address?
Sure.
Um two sixty-eight Broad Street.
Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Absolutely.
And just for the record, uh are you the applicant or are you uh is the owner?
I'm the applicant and the owner.
Okay, and the owner is Weston or?
Weston Property.
Okay, and you're the president?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the other Frank Caruso, R U S S O.
You know, just uh speak up and we don't have the best mic system. So your name is Frank Caruso?
Frank Caruso, R U S S O.
Okay, and your business address?
Two sixty-eight Old Street.
Okay, uh do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, and your affiliation?
Uh vice president.
Of the company?
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh this is an application for variance from the sign. Previously, uh Mr. Potterman, it's got a purchase, we had premises there within the last year. Uh it's still construction, which should be completed within the next thirty days. Will be the building there. There was an existing sign there, uh and what he's proposing to put in a sign. That will blend with the building he's putting together. Ask him a few questions. Uh he requires four variances under your. C variance. C variances, I think you should know, you know, flexible variances. And test will be whether the benefits of the property outweighs the detriment to the zone. Regulations.
Like this, Mister Potterman, uh to testify, Mister Potterman, uh can you tell us what your position is?
Yeah, president of uh Weston Property.
And did you purchase this property?
Yes, I did.
How long ago?
Uh I think it's actually about over two years now.
And you're, you're finishing construction on that, right?
Hopefully, the next thirty days.
And previously, the building was uh occupied by a law office. Right?
Your intention when you?
Actually, I think there was two tenants. There was a. Actually, I think there was two tenants, there was, uh, ten upstairs. Three tenants there, uh, turned it down, down on the lower two levels, and there was two tenants upstairs, so it totaled in three.
And you intend to occupy the premises of Portia?
Yes.
Uh, what portion?
The, uh, upper level.
And what you intend to, uh, run upon tenants for the bottom?
That's correct.
Uh. Let me check that and do for his next, boy, I'd like that, Mr. Woodson.
I just have a quick question. One tenant on the first floor?
Hopefully, I'm hop- hoping for one.
Okay. But you'll probably need spaces for two names on the sign.
There's a lower level there as well, so it's, uh, lower level space, which is, space which is sprinkled and occupied. And then there's the middle level, which is considered the ground floor, and then there's the upper level, which were, were, um, occupied, occupied.
So you might need spaces for three names?
Uh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's for. Uh, Mr. Russo.
By the way, we've been, and in five years, it's obvious that runs several posts, which is, yeah, while downtown base. That should be around the one-on-one on the street.
Yeah.
Mr. Russo, are you employed by, uh, Mr. Potterman, your ass companies? And you're familiar with property?
Yes, correct, yep.
Uh. Uh, can you tell us about the, uh, what sign you like for that sign?
Yes, so the intent, uh, not sure if you, if everyone's familiar with what was there previously, but. The design of that sign that was existing was very similar to the building and the architecture, it's a very unique building. Considering it's a little bit different than most of the other, uh, buildings on, uh, Broad Street, so it's a little more of a commercial style looking building. So previously, they had a cedar type siding that was vertical and horizontal on there, so that matched. Significantly close to what they had on.
I'm sorry, what was it? It was a cedar?
Yeah, it was like an old cedar, uh, siding that was on the exterior of the building. So it was kind of like in a diagonal shape of, I'm not sure what age, eighty?
Eighty's come.
It's in trees.
So that, that was on the exterior of the building previously, and it was also on the lawn sign as well, so it matched. Very cohesively between the two, from a perspective of what, you know, visually what you would see from the road, so you would see. Building that matched architecturally with the signs that matched architecturally, so. Our intent is to, uh, obviously upgrade the existing sign, because it doesn't match what we're. Currently building in that area, so. Our intent is to have a little bit of a more aesthetically pleasing sign that matches. Similar qualities that we're utilizing on the exterior of the building, so we're using. A composite wood that's called new tech. New tech is basically kind of like, you would see like a trex boarding. So it's, it's a very durable boarding that, that can be used, uh. Also on facade, but it can also be used on decking as well, so we're gonna, we're planning on using that as the back portion of the sign. And then utilizing a little bit of paneling to create the, uh, individual panels for them, for the. Not only our space, but for any potential tenant space. Um, so for variance purposes.
I just, just so you know, your, uh, the sign will remain the exact spot.
Yes.
The present sign is, which is.
About twenty-four feet from the curb. From the curb, yeah.
To think compliance, to think compliance with the, uh, ordinance.
So our, our setback for our current sign is a little bit further than you see typically on some of the other locations throughout, uh, Broad Street. Most of those are closer to twelve or fourteen, I don't know exactly what the ordinance calls for, but. Um, ours is a little bit further back, so we're a little bit closer to the building and not quite as close to the street, so we do understand that we are, we're. We're looking to have a larger sign, but we're also considering the fact that it's being further away from the street, so we don't. Have any obstruction to view or any type of conflicts with people having egress in and out of the, uh, dry lanes, basically. Um.
And you're, you're saying the egress thing?
Correct, yes, so.
And there is no.
Correct, yeah.
Leaving in front of the street.
Correct, yeah, so based on the distance that we are, we're approximately about twenty-four feet from the curb line, so we're. We're set back far enough where it, it's still visually. You can still see it from the road, meaning when you pass by, but you're not gonna have an issue when you're actually physically driving out of a lane. To exit or enter into the building, uh, areas for us or the paper space.
Uh, going down, there were four variances that we're talking about, first warning. Has to do with square footage.
Yep.
And you're proposing the sign that's here as thirty-two square.
Yes, so the current sign is approximately four and a half feet by about four feet on each face of it, so it's approximately sixteen square feet. Um, on either side of the triangular shape existing, uh, side from onside. Our new sign that we're, are, uh, looking to potentially have would be a little bit larger in height. But it's about the same width, so it's, it's approximately four feet. Uh, black, who mentions four foot three, and then the height is approximately eight foot six with the, uh, top portion. And that, the reason that we're going that high is to be able to accommodate multiple areas for not only us, but also the tenant, uh, space for our.
Second variance has to do with the face of the.
Someone. Yeah. So, I know that, I believe the code or the ordinance calls that it's only supposed to be, uh, maximum, but I believe two, two and a half. Uh, feet with the actual face or the dimension of it, I don't know. You guys are able to see any of this, but basically, this section, um, we can adjust this, you know, assuming that that's. Um, a point that needs to be addressed, but essentially, we have two foot six here, and we have a three foot section for here. For the changeable tenant space, the reason that this one's a little bit larger on the bottom is so that it could be divided potentially into that. First floor and basement, so we are gonna have potentially two tenants along with our own, um. Basically, our master sign at the top for our own, uh, that we have.
Yeah, Jack, do you know what the requirement is and for signs on? That area, what the ordinance states?
So there's two types, um, there is the, um. One where you, it's typically on that street where you see the two posts and a clearance. Um, and then one where it's closer, it's on the ground, um, and. It feels like just have to be. Uh, I have to look that up for one second, but it's, it's typically what you see on, on Broad Street in like Maple, in the professional office zone.
Is there a restriction on the height of a sign that you know?
Yeah. Um, I'll pull up the ordinance. So the height for a, um. Or a G three, um, which is closer to what the applicant is. Proposing, the maximum height is six feet, I'm sorry, no, that's not closer, sorry, the height for what, um. Without any clearance, something on the ground, um, would be two and a half feet. That's the maximum height. For the ones where it's two posts. Um, that, the maximum height there is six feet with a clearance of two and a half feet.
Before the beginning of the sign, is that what you mean by clearance?
Yeah, so this from the grade to the top, um, to the bottom of the sign.
Yeah, this is the question, just trying to understand the math of the dimensions, you said it's four. Eight-three inches by eight-eight-six inches, which is thirty-six and a little bit. Um, I saw seventy-two square foot in the.
We're counting.
Both sides, okay, thirty-six.
I don't know how, how it gets read, you know?
Okay, I was just trying to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then just to kind of expand on what Shawna was explaining. Our science sort of a blend of almost the two scenarios, because. The building is not like a standards, you know, typically on Broad Street, you see a lot of buildings that look like houses almost. And those have the, the standalone post with the two-foot clearance and then the four-foot, uh, space of the sign itself. In our case, ours almost blends into almost what you would see at like the Santana Bank, which is more of a commercial building. That has a lower sign that sits on the ground, but it's only approximately. Two and a half, three feet, uh, it's, it's, looks like it's more than that, but I'm not sure, um, off of the ground itself, and that's like a big sign that sits. Ground basically. Um, so we're attempting to kind of blend the two together a little bit in order to allow. Us to be able to get enough space to be able to accommodate for the multiple that are actually, um, gonna be occupying the space. And then as well, like I said, we're trying to aesthetically connect to what the building is existing, you know, what. What we propose and, and change development. Uh, for next.
Yes, and your building is probably one of the biggest buildings, uh, up at Damn Street. I'm, I'm.
No, it's also about cinema, like apps, it's small apps.
It's about Robert, Robert, so, okay, so. So seventy-seven, uh, hundred square feet for the size of the building between each level, so it's approximately.
Uh, you're also asking you wanna put in, uh. Internally, internal lighting, maybe the next door.
Right, so we were looking, um.
Can you explain the difference just a little?
Sure, so typically, what you would see on Broad Street is you have. The two foot sides, like we had mentioned before, with the four-foot area and the two-foot clearance on the bottom, they look like a more than hanging sign. Um, those sides are typically, uh, illuminated with landscaping lighting, so you have a, a bulb that sits in the ground. Shines up at the light, uh, up at the sign, and then illuminates that area. Um, we're proposing to have a backlit, um, sign, so it's, it's basically LEDs that shine light backwards. And onto the sign itself, and the reason that we're, we've. Uh, went with this option was because typically. That type of illumination has less reflection, because it's lighting on the back, it's not bouncing off, so when you have a light that's in the ground. And it shines up on some sort of fixed panel, whether it's a board or something else, the refr- reflectivity of that light. It bounces in multiple directions, so we're trying to concentrate the light, since it is a larger sign. Just by illuminating the backlit portion of it, and it would shine up against the, uh, the material, which is that composite wood on the backside.
So what's the typical hours of operation for the, um, your tenants or the tenants that you're expecting to?
It's, it's professional office, so your typical hours are eight to five. So it would be eight-thirty to five, or, or seven-thirty to four-thirty?
So you plan to have those lights on pretty much the entire night, or from?
I haven't thought about that one, Sean. Um. Ideally, I would, I would, I would assume it's like ones that are on the, uh, that, that are currently there, I, I would think they need lights at night, right? For most people, is that, is there, is there a restriction on that?
If there's a restriction, why would?
Yeah.
Yeah, whoever's to code, whoever's to the code.
Usually, the, the code is that if it's adjacent, um, across them or, or adjacent to residential property.
Yeah.
Then it has to be shut off at certain hours.
You know, we gotta make it beyond a timer, that's necessary.
Mr. Russo, do you see any detriment to any of the damages or anything?
You know, uh, like I said before, ours is set back significantly. Further back than other locations, if you drive past Broad Street, you'll be able to notice, uh, where our sign location is versus the other ones. In my own opinion, obviously, just my opinion, um. Other signs I feel like are more detrimental to, you know, visibility purposes, because of where there's no. And when you pull up and you actually sit in your car, you're looking for oncoming traffic. You have a sign that's right there and physical blocks, you, whereas ours, it's not in that position, it's actually set back further, so you wouldn't. You wouldn't even need to the point where you would be getting to the road yet.
Yeah. Do you know if there's any other signs on Broad Street that are illuminated like that?
I don't know that answer.
I would say, I, I would think, I don't know in that area, I would think a little bit. It's, I don't know, I don't wanna say some, I don't wanna.
Oh, yeah.
Santana says internally.
Internally, yes. Okay. And then, I don't know about Wells Fargo, right, you know, they're kind of diagonal from where we are on, on street. Both those two buildings.
I mean, it's not the same issue, but with external orbit.
No, you don't wanna. It reflects too much.
I agree.
So it'd be more of what, more of a safety competition.
Hmm.
Shawna, did you say, uh, Santana is internal, Santana?
I think Santana is internal.
The red, the red's low.
Yeah, I think the, the white.
The white is.
There's this part into it, like it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the box of it and with the letters in it, this is more of. Honestly, I would call this more of a halo lit, um, type of lighting, instead of. Um, like if the internal lights that we really, um, see come before us that require variance. Where it's the channel letters and the lighting is inside of it. Um, this one is more, it's, uh, we've approved applications like that, that type of lighting, and around being like a, a halo. And because I guess the cutout of, um, the metal pieces, um, that, I guess the in. The intent is for the light to shine through those, um, metal pieces, so.
So the lettering is not lit, it's the surrounding?
Yeah. But it, instead of, I guess, where we usually see it, the block letter and then it's surrounding it, now the light's gonna be. More concentrated inside, I guess, because of the, the stencil that's there.
A light with stencil over the top.
There been other signs like this approved?
No, this is our fir- the first one like this I've laid.
The halo, yes.
The halo, yes, but, um. Just the way how it's inverted, where it's, it's the opposite of what we usually get.
Wouldn't you say that it's, um, about three feet higher than all the other signs on that street? Uh, it's like. Eight and a half. This is supposed to be eight and a half, right?
Correct, yeah.
And the requirement.
Mostly the sign, I think, would be about six feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The clearance on the bottom and then the four-foot section. Yes, two and a half, perhaps. Of that, yes.
So is that done on purpose, so you'd be noticed more?
You know, so. Sign designer. Yeah. Of lots, so they wanted, they wanted to show their creativity, which I respect, obviously, more than the design.
Just bring the mic to you.
So obviously, we're, uh, we're in the construction general contracting business, so let's learn. But he's creative, as they, and, um, and Nick spearheaded, Frank spearheaded this project with, uh. Uh, yes, this, yes, graphics, uh. So yes, they were trying to be creative.
Okay.
I would submit it's a very plain signs. Like.
I try to think of the colors combined with the, you know, building.
Yeah, no, yeah, they, they match the building totally, yes. I agree with that.
Thank the designer, Sean. Panels on the building and all that other stuff.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building.
So I actually have a concern with the height, it's typically, well, it's, it doesn't. Match any of, of these signs in the area, um, do you really need a sign that large?
So. I, I think we can take a foot off that, it'd be fine, to be honest with you, seven and a half feet is, I think, more than enough.
Well, considering that the average person is six foot or shorter, you know, just the. The idea that the sign is higher than people is what bothers me.
And typically, those type of signs are seen at like hospitals, so it's like, you know. Larger, these large office buildings, um. These institutionalized buildings, like those are what those signs to me, um, when I Google it, um. That's usually what's seen in front of it, instead of these small scale for office buildings.
Sure, Sean, I respect that.
And I think on that street, um. And I think on that street, um even though it's not historic, but one of the things um about. Having those houses adaptively reused. To professional offices to kind of maintain the look. That it's um you're still driving through like a residential neighborhood, even though it's meant for business. I think that's the look that that's meant for that section of Broad Street, especially the professional office.
Sure. And I actually, um I guess we're full respect, you know, we respect that. We, you know, we do a lot of store work in in the five boroughs of Manhattan, uh in Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, predominantly. So we respect historic, we go and turn a landmark, um I understand that and um. However, it is obviously if it's six feet, which the height of other signs. I would say if we can conform to the height and give away, give up the height to get it to six feet. I would say this would be a a beautiful sign that would, and we gave, I don't know how many mailers we went out, but nobody objected to that. Um these the really certified letters and um. We do believe that this uh is a beautiful sign for the neighborhood, for the vibe of the neighborhood and um. But if we do bring it down to six feet, I don't see why. Um. We would wouldn't work for everybody, right?
I think, yeah, bringing it down to the height of the ones that are on the posts um would be better.
I'm fine with six feet, okay, six feet. I don't want it to be a sort of.
It's just really intense.
The point of it is not to like, look at that gorgeous sign. I I don't want to take away from our beautiful building. So I think that. Um focus closed is the first time I'm looking at it today. So I think that's uh six feet is perfect.
I wouldn't do this uh.
Right, no, I I think this mark it at six feet, six feet. They mark it at six feet, I think they'll be able to add it, right?
That's if the board finds it acceptable.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's time.
Four, four feet, three inches. So it's about the same as any.
Well, I mean, I think the signs are all.
Turn on your mic.
I'm sorry. I think the signs are all developed so that if you're driving. This is your range, right? So when you're going down the road and you you see something and for a six seater driver, something on the size of road. Uh in the in the front yard would be about six feet, eight feet would be like this, actually looking up that.
I think six feet is perfect.
So I think that's why six feet is kind of the norm.
Yeah.
For whether they're backlit or however they're lit. Um the width is like. Uh really, all this is determined by how much stuff you need to put on. And if you went out with twenty tenants, then you're going to have, you know. Small tight trunks to get a bunch of.
The maximum attention happens in this building is probably five, but it's never, I mean, the max thing I have now is. Five, if you're two and two downstairs, two and two, so it'd be five max. But uh. He's gonna have to, you know, make it work with six.
Until the VP wants his own office then.
He already has his own. Right next to my sister.
I need a floor.
Okay, any, any other questions from the board? I'm having trouble visualizing the type of lighting that that's going to illuminate the sign. Do you have?
It would be inside.
Do you have like an an example that you could show us or images or?
I'm a client of Lee's. There's some. Lighting a huge enough in almost every sign.
There's a color remembering.
I didn't print this.
It's not something that the light is supposed to attract. It was a very um. Uh indirect light.
Here's the color.
Very modern. Thank you.
Looks instead of the white with landscape letters and stick out much more than this, but not.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Plus, it's probably safer when you're there. Lights. On a landscape.
Easier to moor around. Any other questions from the board?
For would block one.
Any questions from the public? See any there? Any comments from the board?
Why are you looking at me, right?
Uh any comments from the public?
Those public portion, anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny after. Mister Kennedy states all his.
Sure.
Facts.
If I took the liberty of writing down some potential conditions of approval, if the board sees fit uh. Obviously, compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations the teammate tonight, uh compliance with Sean's review memorandum. And obviously, the uh the sign is just limited to tenants in the building, correct? It's not others and there's no blinking or flashing or things like that, correct? And Shauna, uh I think we said a timer and are we going to, I I know in other similar applications, we said. That the light needs to be turned off from at blank o'clock to blank, are we?
I think it all depends on uh whether or not it's um facing a residential.
Okay.
Property or residential.
So we don't need something here?
I think we should put in the ordinance, um whatever it is to COVID or or whatever it is in ordinance.
So, yeah, some of those buildings have a.
Yeah, something's saying, at this point, tell them this example I saw was in red. I don't know if that's the sign you want to see. It looks like Ramsey's Kitchen. The red light behind the illuminated lucite panels.
Oh, it gives off like a red.
Yeah, it gave a red, an orangey glow. I mean, it's it's the question is, do we want it to only be white? And do we need someone to test how many lumens? Is that the?
The foot candle?
Yeah, how many foot candles it actually is, because we don't know that without seeing what type of light bulb is lighting.
It's gonna be an LED white light.
Yeah, but but LED white lights come in, I mean, I have a mirror that you touch it and you hold it longer and it goes ooh. And it and it comes out at you after a while, you know. So I mean, I think that's up for our engineer to kind of throw out. Uh are there limits?
So uh I would recommend that you submit any revised drawings um for the six feet, just to show the lighting candle, the footprint.
And if you have intentions of using color.
Because it's it's um not allowed to be spilt.
Using foot candles?
Yeah, the foot candle and it has to be as bright as um within the property lines.
Sure.
So Shauna, say it again, uh submit the lighting and foot candle details.
Yeah.
Um.
And it can't exceed past the property line.
Okay, so no adverse lights spill over.
It definitely will not. That's how most don't forget this light is going to be shining. Um onto our property line, like which will never go past the driveway and then it'll go, we have multiple feet on the. That property, so definitely wrong.
And then we had in terms of uh no uh compromising any site triangle easements. And I mean technically, is this a one or two sided or three sided sign?
Three sided.
Three sided.
So it's you have front and rear, which would be facing north and south. And then you have the um eastern view, which is going to give you the street address.
Thank you. And I think uh obviously we sometimes say no new, no neon and it's not. It's a stationary sign. There's no interchangeable copy uh like computer wise, it's just going to be. No, and uh and then the other uh some of the things we talked about tonight were. Uh well, it's going to be in the exact same spot as the uh. Existing sign and I guess uh I had a question, uh so just for clarification purposes, when it says seventy two square feet, that's for. Two of the sides, it's thirty six.
Correct.
Square feet. It's gonna be less, right?
Twenty six times twenty fifty two square feet total.
Square feet total. Okay, and then um uh no lights spill over and uh. We're going to reduce the sign height to six feet. And uh Shauna, that eliminates one sign variance, correct?
No.
Oh, it doesn't, they still need, oh, I thought we they needed one for six feet, okay.
Because of the type of sign, so because theirs is going from ground up.
Okay.
Then it it's supposed to be two and a half feet.
Got it, so it is still.
But because it's and there's, it's not the one with the pole, the two poles and.
Got it.
Clearance. Then we're doing the height for the. The G three.
Okay, and is that what this is, G three?
This is a.
Or G four?
It's a mixture of both.
Okay, got it. And the last uh. Uh conditions were LED white light. Um the foot candles are going to be reviewed by Shauna and the board engineer. And they're going to submit with the revised plans, the uh lighting and foot candle details and it has to be. Um or can't exceed uh the allowable dimensions at the property line. I guess that's the way we can say it.
Right.
All right, so if those are acceptable to uh the board members.
Clarification on that. I'm sorry, did we say LED white light only unless we were, uh I think the white.
Whatever, I think whatever doesn't. From my understanding, doesn't cause a spillage, spillage.
Yeah, it's well guaranteed, there's no spillage from the foot candles. Um.
Got it.
But if like if it's our color, it's gold, I don't know, we are, we want, we want to put gold. Does that make a difference?
Does it make a difference, Sharon?
Sure.
Because all the signs in the area.
I mean, we haven't seen this before. I mean, I'm assuming that you're, there's going to be a Plexiglas logo that's. Allows it to shine through, which means that Plexiglas is going to allow some refractive, this is the word, when the light comes through it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So depending on how big the the blocks are, right? Going to be depending on how much light actually projects through the R, ours is going to be different from the smaller ones.
Correct.
So if you get too bright, you're going to have a blur.
Yeah, we definitely don't want, we need to be tasteful.
But so then the color of it is going to be, I mean, again, I don't know, is your R R going to be gold and then, you know, your name. Or your name is going to be gold, everybody else is going to be silver. I don't know.
It's gonna look tasteful.
We have to, you know.
It's not more like a shop central, it's but about like.
I mean, again, we don't, the building is so different and it's always been different and it's always required.
Yeah.
Different specs. So we need clarification from our profession, from you to give to our professionals. That we know what we're expecting to see when when you light, turn on the buttons. And we want, we want you to not have to unturn the buttons on.
I agree.
But we want to do it right first.
Absolutely.
So I think that would be confirmation that the board engineer and Shauna review and approve the lighting and and foot candle details and brightness.
But again, it's going to be something completely new because we not.
We haven't seen.
Seen this type. And then you have to compare it to the neighborhood it's in. Because we don't know. Pioneer.
Oh, yeah.
So if those are, if if that's, if the pleasure of the board is to accept those uh conditions, we can uh move forward if that's what the board wants.
Uh anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny?
Yes, you may know. Well, I would approve the sign pending the uh decision made by Shauna. Our planner and that and our engineer. So we could uh, I I mean, I'd like to have an idea of what they were that you approved, so when I go by and say.
Listen, when you guys resubmit, I can, we can talk about it at at um workshop.
But otherwise, um I I mean, the building is exceptional and you're trying to make the sign match with that. Um so uh and it's really a preexisting situation. We kind of grandfathered in, but we just don't want it to take over the world.
No, man, we will not.
How much you're building it all, right? I gotta finish what I was doing, I'm sorry.
All right. Ann Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Matt Yoro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Mike?
Yes.
And Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Well.
But then all we have to do now is just, we'll get it to the six foot, we'll reach, we'll verify everything else and then.
I'll and I'll prepare a resolution that the board will adopt at the next meeting. I'll send it to Mister Schwartz so you guys can make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Say that she's actually would, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up we have two fifty Shrewsbury Avenue.
Okay, Mister Chairman, as the applicant's team comes forward uh for the final time tonight, uh we're going to swear in. Shauna E. Banks, who is a licensed planner and our director of community development, Jacqueline Durman. Who is our board engineer, uh Shauna and Jacqueline, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide? To the extent you provide any will be the truth, the best your knowledge to help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, both witnesses have been sworn. And just for the record, on this application of two five O MPG Holdings LLC regarding two five O Shrewsbury Avenue. Is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? All right, I don't see any. And let the record reflect that the board secretary and Sean and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it would be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to uh proceed tonight. And Mister McKenna, momentarily after you uh enter your appearance, if you could just, for the record, either you or have your client identify who the. Principles are of MPG Holdings, just so we can do an internal conflict check. And what we will do uh is mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So we're going to start off by saying, uh let's see. A one is the uh letter of denial prepared by Shauna E. Banks dated October thirty first, two thousand twenty three. A two is the intent to proceed. A three is the disclosure of ownership. A four is the land development escrow agreement undated. And A five is the uh use variance plan prepared by dynamic engineering dated January twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Consisting of three sheets. A six is the preliminary floor plan prepared by uh Studio Forty Three D Architecture and Design. Dated October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three, last revised April thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, consisting of one sheet. A seven is a survey prepared by Harris Surveying Inc. dated June sixth, two thousand five. A eight is a traffic impact and parking assessment prepared by uh Dynamic Traffic. It is February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. A nine is a letter of deliverables prepared by Edward J. McKenna dated March fifth, two thousand twenty four. And I guess we'll mark as A ten is the T and M Associates Review Memorandum dated. May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four. Sean, I think that was everything.
Yeah.
Uh so uh good evening, Mister McKenna.
Good evening, uh Mister Chairman, members of the board. Please forgive me, I'm a little hoarse tonight. Um Mister Kennedy, in response to your inquiry concerning the ownership of the LLC is uh Leonard Gorski. The gentleman sitting next to me, he's going to be the first witness tonight. He is the sole owner of the LLC.
Thank you, Miss, uh ladies and gentlemen of the board. Hearing that name, does that bring any questions, comments, concerns regarding conflicts, potential conflicts? We're good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um we're here tonight of what might seem like a a simple application, and we believe it is. But historically, um I'd like to give you a little bit of background. Uh Mister Gorski purchased this property at two fifty Shrewsbury Avenue, approximately eighteen acres. Of course, and um at the time, he had one uh small office tenant and three apartments. Um the office tenant uh uh left at a certain juncture. And the property, the office in the front on the first floor has been vacant for over five years. It's closer to six. As I understand. Um it is a very small space, uh seventy square feet.
It's roughly around three hundred and seventy square feet.
And um it had a tenant who was uh an attorney. Who there one or two days a week at most and had one desk and there was a. Uh assistant that had another desk and that was the total occupancy of that dirt. Um since then, he's not his daughter for rent for this extended period and that absolutely no tangents whatsoever. The reason we're here this evening is that in the NB one zone, normally there should be a first floor commercial tenant. Occupied the first floor. He has three apartments, two on the second floor, one on the first floor, defined where the office space was. Um however, that space is just unrented. Through all this time, he's had it offered, signs in the window, everything. Through all this time, he's had it offered, signs in the window, everything, absolutely no tape, so COVID, I don't think it's helped any in connection with that. So, we're here tonight to comment, we're going to talk about how many other buildings in immediate proximity. Uh, first floor residences with no commercial use. So the request on the purpose of working was to allow him the brick that's fixed. And to be another apartment, you know, he's taking the occupant, so it doesn't serve any purpose, being vacant for a extended period of time. He's concerned about the safety of the building, quite frankly, with it being vacant, and I know. He's had the three apartments that are uh at the location occupied one hundred percent since he bought the building. So he doesn't anticipate any problem renting the space, it's just that we need to get a variance from this board. So, on that note, I'd like to ask Mr. Gorski, please.
Okay, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Gorski, eighteen pound drive to that, I'm in Percy.
And just spell your last name for the record?
G O R S K I.
S K I. Uh, good evening and welcome to the Red Bank zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God? Thank you.
Mr. Gorski, you heard the representations I just made to the board, the representations were made based on information you have provided to me, correct?
Yes.
And um, that I accurately reflect to the board the condition of the property in the building to rent it.
Yes.
And um, it is your hope that the board sees it, allowing you to renovate that space to create an apartment and rent it, so you have a fully rented area.
Correct.
And as indicated uh in the comments of the board, you have three pre-existing apartments there. Uh, including one behind the uh vacant office space that have been fully rented since you've owned the building.
Yes.
So um, fitness with the, with the proposal that you have, the concept that you have for converting that space into.
We're going to take the existing commercial space and create a new kitchen, new bathroom, have new fixtures and appliances, uh, with all new things, with stoppages.
If you could just pull the mic closer to you.
Yes. Your feet.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to take the current existing office space and renovate it into a new kitchen, new bathroom, new fixtures and appliances, and all new furniture. Um, I'm also going to replace the front storefront door and window with residential type windows and a residential type door.
And I want that to, okay, it's an idea about that, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, um, Jackie, just so you know, we we got that comment in your letter, and um, we have actually agreed to have that incorporated. If the board sees such a grant approval. We will incorporate that as a condition that we replace the existing window of the front with residential type windows. Um, yeah, so.
Got it. Thank you.
And um, in in connection, there was, you meant to anticipate any of the faulty renting space.
Now, I, um, the present tenants I have continually ask me if I have any additional uh spaces for the rents.
I'm sorry, I just have a question about the windows. Can it not be just these small, basic windows, but something more?
Yeah, no, they're not going to be small, whether the existing storefront is relatively big, well, it doesn't block it up to about three foot.
Okay.
Three by four window, two, it's going to be a good size.
All right.
You've actually, uh, yeah, have it designed like that.
I actually have, we didn't revise the plans. I have a.
Do I have a copy?
Uh, I have ten copies.
No, do I have a electronic?
I wish.
Just did it?
Oh, pardon me.
Did it today?
Okay.
But uh. You know, do you want to mark that in?
Sure.
Yeah, can we see it?
So, uh, Shawna, what do we have to think? I ended.
Five?
I think A eleven. So A eleven is.
Oh.
I'll take, shoot, so. I'm not sure if we're going to have enough copies.
See one. Okay, Captain. So we're going to mark this as A eleven. And for the record, A eleven is. The preliminary floor plan. And it's uh dated. October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three, last revised July sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, consisting of one sheet. Prepared by Studio Forty Three Day. Thank you.
So the size of the apartment is basically going to be the same size as the office?
Yes.
Um, that's what, three seventy square feet? What are the sizes of your other other apartments, if I may ask?
The apartment above is actually a little smaller. It's probably around three hundred and twenty five. The apartment in the second floor rear is about four hundred square feet. And biggest apartment I have is the one in the first floor here, that's about five hundred.
Okay.
About the floor plan that. So the board has any questions? Gorski, as far as. Any civilization? Yeah, I need to answer any question.
You got parking your current tenant's apartment street?
Yes.
So this would be also.
Yes, we have, we have some uh destiny coming to the board. Been there for many years. And not in a matter of thought.
Correct.
We provided, we provided no on-site questioning. He didn't want to.
Thanks.
I just want to go back to the window, I'm sorry. Um, so I do think the top window has that, that design at the top. Is it possible to kind of bring that down to have that same look to match the top?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Shawna, say that again?
Uh, that the window on the designer not mesh.
Got it. Okay, so uh, the window design, say it again, which one, the, which one has the match?
That the window should look more closely, the design of the window um should look more closely to to the ones at the top.
To the top, top is what we like. On A eleven, got it.
And I couldn't. Two forty eight next door.
Uh, bits in my building with the right.
Yeah, yeah, the red brick.
Um, I own the, I know.
Yeah, they're kind of sloppy on that front, you know?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they're pretty sloppy. Oh, they weren't the other day. Uh, I live on this block, uh, I think uh, this is a good idea.
Just to clarify again, this has a four hundred and seventy one square foot office space. You said it was three seven?
Yeah, one that was calculated, calculated with the stair, that's a leasable space.
Oh.
I'm tipping this there.
Okay. And and just for the record, when I uh need to do the resolution, the existing first floor apartment has how many bedrooms?
One bedroom.
One bedroom, how many bath?
One bedroom.
All right, and the second floor rear, how many bedrooms?
One bedroom.
And how many bathrooms?
One bed, one bedroom.
And and the second floor front?
All right. Correction, one in the rear has two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
One bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
And one in the front has one bedroom, one bathroom.
And then the one that you're proposing today uh to convert is going to have how many bedrooms?
One bedroom.
And how many bathrooms? Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Questions from the board?
Anyway, when you.
Understand that there's parking, there's no parking there ever.
Yeah. See that, maybe.
This is, this is not just a no parking problem, this is a no outside, I told you, this, when you walk by that front door. You're either going to be watching television with them, or sitting on their bed with them, or sitting in their bathroom with them. It's, even when this was a business, this was um a very tight space. And I think at that point in time, they didn't allow the full window. Because, and this was a long time ago, maybe before your time even, um, the full window, uh, because of its intrusion upon the street. Um, and I mean, it's not all for tenants, but tenants want to come into Red Bank for whatever reason now, so they're willing to pay for other victims, which surprises me why they have not been able to rent it. As a, as a rented space, unless you don't have the um proper toiletries, uh plumbing or whatnot. Um. I find it's not just, it's small, no smaller than the rest of your units, but I find it's just like. The reason it was deemed to be for commercial is because it probably should be, became some privacy for tenants living on that street. What you have is the point to living in your car on the street edge, it's just very close. And I, I don't, I'm not very comfortable with this whole situation.
Well, I can handle the window situation because uh I can make the windows a smaller window, so you get light, but you can't visually see it. Bring the wall higher, if it was three foot high, something that's available, and when you're in a apartment.
Just speaking to the mic, so we can get.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to, um, I mean, the marketability of the, the better the window, I mean, from the inside, it'll be fine. But it is, I mean, that has like a six-foot sidewalk in front of it, so you're never further away from that front window than six feet, and it's heavily foot trapped. Um, I do agree with a colleague that any improvement of an empty space, we we like. But I don't know that that's the best improvement. I think the original plan was to have businesses or a, a small business of some sort, I don't know, telephone cards, whatever the thing. It's just, I mean, and I understand the difficulty in renting it.
Well, I ran, I uh, I purchased the building and renovated it, opened it up from the top to, uh, new services, new electrical, new plumbing are complete. I renovated the office, the office had new plumbing, new bathroom, new she brought, um, and new apartment, it's a cleaning space. I, I hired a broker um that leases properties for my other uh properties, and I've had no luck with it for six years.
It's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult property, no doubt, it's just, I just, I mean, you're between um social club. And the social hub of the community on the other side that's growing. And it's, it's, to me, it's just not optimal, and you don't offer anything, you don't offer them a place to put their vehicle, or to have a vehicle. We're having a problem with that. We expect people to have some type of transportation and need some type of space, and it just doesn't, to me, it's not conducive to the right apartment. But somebody can take it at some point in time. I'm surprised you have not rented it, whatever condition it's in, even for a business, I'm surprised.
Well, he, he couldn't have offered it.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean.
It's a property.
And that's why I, I'm just surprised.
And uh, I'm, yeah. Karen, you know the.
I, I, I know, like I said, it's the, it's, it's like having your hand in a vice. You want it, but you have, you can't let go of this, you know?
Well, I, I have a problem is, and you're going to hear planning test, but how many other residences there are on the first floor?
Yeah.
Within two block radius.
Yeah, oh, there are quite a few.
So it's not fair to this trailer, and I would submit that that. For all those spaces to exist, why would this position have to pay punishment?
Well, I think we've had, these, these all used to be homes. These used to all be homes with front porches and yards, and slowly they crept in, you closed in the front. Then you take away the porch, and then you make that livable space. So what used to be a house, they, I mean, if you look at the tops of them, you'll see they were identical, the three houses in a row there. Um, the front porch is gone, it became a room, then it came pushed out to the street a little bit more with a room over top of it, and now what you have is a tenant. Um, this is what you bought, you invested in it. Thank you for doing that in the, into the community. I just don't know if it's the best use of it to keep it that way. I mean, I don't want it empty, you know, um. But, and I don't want you, you struggling either, because you're putting your time and effort into it to make it the right type of place. I just don't, I, I just don't see it as a, a proper space. We may end up voting because there's no other option. But uh, it's a, a difficult spot, and it's not conducive, to me, it's not good for the neighborhood, to me.
I'd like to ask um. Your perception of the retail market on Shrewsbury Avenue compared to the rest of Red Bank? Uh, would you agree that's probably the weakest retail environment in, in Red Bank, Shrewsbury Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The, what has happened to the office market in Red Bank and in America and New Jersey in the last four years? I've had a historic collapse in the office market in New York, and if you look at all those commercial houses on Broad Street, now it's spaces of the land, almost houses, how many unused offices there are. Unreckless everywhere, this vacant space. And um, it is too bad. I liked having a lawyer's office there, but there weren't there much, as you said, and they're gone. They moved to Broad Street.
Yeah. Going to a better space.
But the, the market unfortunately for commercial space there is quite weak and residential is quite powerful. So I, I agree with Sharon philosophically, but as a practical matter.
Any other questions?
Um, I just have a question on the square footage, because in this report here, it says three fifty eight. What, what is the square footage of this, that you have the apartment?
Three seventy one would be my, uh, rentable.
What is, um?
That's to the outside walls.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's rental.
So, yeah, these are very small apartments, all of them, very small.
Yeah, the one upstairs is small.
Okay.
And actually, taking on that, I mean, um, Shawna, just so I know, is there any variance, and if there is, I just want to make sure I have it. Uh, is there any variance required for the size of the unit?
Jackie?
Uh, five, six hundred.
Yes, six hundred.
Minimum of, sorry, it should be a minimum of six hundred. And the proposed is three some more, no, three seventy seven, is that right? Three seventy one?
Yeah. All right, I just want to make sure that if, if, if the application's approved, we give you that variance, I think it, okay.
I noticed.
Perfect, thank you.
If there are no other questions. I'm sorry. The, the unit on the, students on the second floor are the units that require the six hundred square feet. There's no provision for units on the first floor. Because.
Sound loud.
It wasn't loud.
You're right.
But, but it was a pre-existing condition when he bought the building nineteen years ago.
Correct.
Uh, there was already an undersized apartment on the, and undersized apartments on the second.
Thank you.
So then it all fits within the. Makes. I might have let the call. Uh, that from the dynamic engine.
Good evening, how are you? If you could just state your name for the record? Good to see you again. If you could just uh, uh, state your business address, please? All right, do you swear that the information you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed?
A professional engineer.
Thank you.
And Andrew, you've been qualified to play for previously.
Uh, yes, I have, and several of the municipalities surrounding the area, so I'll start in Jersey.
And how long have you been in the dynamic?
Uh, about ten years now, and I've been in this field for the duration of my career, about seventeen years now.
And um, as a request of the owner, you wanted an examination. Uh, of two things, number one, the uh opportunity for on-street parking in the community area. And then secondly, the, the minimus of any impact of eliminating the office and having a one-bedroom apartment.
Yes, that's correct. So we um we prepared a traffic impact and parking assessment. Was submitted to the board and reviewed by the board's professional. It's a it's a, from a traffic perspective, this is really as as basic uh as as they come. Um, really, we're trading out a daytime use uh from a traffic and parking perspective for an overnight use, you're taking the office. And going to the residential. So from a trick perspective, uh with an office, you would have someone come to work in the morning. In this case, you have someone leaving to go to work in the morning. So it's really just reverses from a traffic perspective. Um, and that's why I'm reporting with it's really a net zero impact. Uh, from a parking perspective, whereas an office uh would would be parking during the day. Uh, a residential uses typically use parking at night. So although there is a really no net change in the parking, they may have the time at which that parking is uh is needed changes. Uh, so we prepared a a report that we submitted to the board. Um, within the report, we really, we took a look at just immediately surrounding roads, just looking at how much parking is available. Not necessarily being used or otherwise, um. It's about ninety ninety parking stalls that are just available straight, you know, excluding the driveways, excluding the hydrants, excluding the locations adjacent to corners. Uh, and that's on River Street, Bank Street, and Leighton Avenue. Uh, in addition, um. I actually live locally, so was able to come out here and the evening hours, I'm also just familiar with this area. Uh, I've lived locally, there's abundance of parking in the real world just available. Uh, so not really concerned as to what stripe, but what's actually available for someone to drive up a park, considering, you know, it's a suitable center park up there. So one evening around nine P M, I just took a look out there and counted. Uh, and within the immediate block. Uh, extending out, there's about a little about forty stalls just on the immediate block, but the streets has immediately surrounded. And you expand out to further blocks, it gets much larger, upwards of a hundred, about a hundred fifty part of spaces just being available at one or being utilized around nine P M. I'm sure there's plenty of parking out there, I have no concerns about that time picking up a lot of parking. Sorry.
So and you heard Mr. Gorski testify. Location, correct?
Right, and and I didn't, I didn't learn that until after I did this, and I'm not surprised by by what you said.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board in this witness? Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay.
Here's my testimony as to what is done and then uh his other options. Okay, thanks for looking.
All right, good evening, uh, Justin, if you could just state your uh name and your business address?
Justin Ossillo, A U C I E L L O, and the address is a consulting group, one twenty five Ammyle Road, Suite Two Hundred, here in Red Bank.
And uh if you could just uh raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes, sir.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed professional planner with all your licenses and certifications current and up to date, correct? Thank you.
Justin, um, we were retained by the under this particular case to do. Examination of the area of the the surrounding property, the utilization of those properties. And also to address the free variants necessary in this particular case. Um, and which provide for the.
You're fine.
Sure, um, so what I'll do is I'll uh refer to the T N M letter dated uh May twenty ninth of this year. Uh, page two, there's a really nice job of uh, you know, applying the banks that are required. You know, starting with number one, of course, we're here for a a use variance, this is a zone. That uh doesn't permit uh residential on the the first floor. Um, I I think it's important to note, and I understand the concerns of uh Ms. Lee. Um, uh, that that residential might not be the most appropriate use here. Uh, but from planning perspective, uh, what I always really, for any project, whether whether it's this or. Pretty much anything else, I walk the area, I get a feel of relationship between the site and the surrounding area. And um I am familiar with this area, but I'm not necessarily familiar with this particular block. And when I walked the area, I was was sort of surprised to see um. Many residential units on the first floor. By my count, uh, within a two-block radius uh to the north and the south, uh, there are approximately um. Eight to ten units on the first floor of uh of Shrewsbury Avenue. Um, so from a planning perspective, when we look at uh the proofs for a day variance, the first is a particular suitability. And um that's that's a showing of what what makes this site particularly suited for the proposed use. Um, and context is always very clear. And the context shows me that even though the zone does not permit um residential on the first floor. Uh, there's actually plenty of of residential on the first floor. Uh, I don't know how old uh those units are, but most of these buildings are are quite old. Um, so in terms of uh the other, the other point to suitability, um, there. There was a uh version used previously um on this property on the first floor. But as the applicant uh has stated, uh, this has been dead, this has been dead space for more than five years. Uh, from a planning perspective, uh, dead space does nothing for the community. Um, by allowing tenants, residential tenants uh to to occupy the space. I think it's important for the vibrancy of the street. Um, tenants will help us more than commercial that's on the street. I think it's also very important uh to have uh more eyes on the street. Um, having more people uh residing on Shrewsbury Avenue just helps with the visibility. Um, helps helps people to know that there's somebody around. And having a vacant space, uh, a dark space at night. Um, for for, you know, from a planning standpoint, really doesn't do, doesn't do any good for the community. Um, part and parcel to that is, as you heard from the applicant, um, you know, the upgrades to the windows and the general economics. Across the first floor of the building. Um, I think all of that shows that uh residential on the first floor, while it may not be permitted in this zone. Um, is is suited for this property, is suited for this property, such as the property itself, but in its uh spatial uh connection to the surrounding area. Uh, in terms of the positive criteria of the special reasons, um, it's my professional opinion that there are multiple purposes of zoning. And this one you saw uh that that will be advanced should the board uh vote uh well fairly of this application. I think I think general uh welfare, which is criteria A. Uh, I think again, by activating the first floor with a use that's consistent with the surrounding area, I think that goes a long way. To promoting the the vibrancy of the street and putting eyes on the street. Um, the appropriate population density, which is uh, which is purpose E, of the uh, the L O U L. Again, this is residential in a building that has other residential units. Um, I think it's, I think it's certainly uh appropriate in the context of the site uh with other residential units. Uh, criteria G, uh, there's more than sufficient space to occupy uh or for residential. Um, rather than occupy on the first floor, as you heard uh from our traffic engineer, uh, there's plenty of parking. Uh, in the area and I just note for the record, there is no parking provided for the existing units. Uh, and there doesn't seem to be any issue given uh the availability of parking in the area. Uh, and uh connected to that is criteria H, uh, the free flow of parking. Um, again, you know, more than, I'm sorry, uh, a free flow of traffic and parking is connected to that, there aren't going to be any traffic impacts. Um, by providing residential on the first floor and uh the desirable visual environment. Uh, which is uh, which is I, purpose I, V L U L. Um, the improvement to the facade of the building with the new windows, I think goes a long way. Biding a a nice uh visual appearance, not just for the property owner, uh, but for the the vibrancy and viability of uh of uh of this room. Um, in terms of the negative criteria, whether or not there's going to be substantial detriment for public good. Certainly, I don't see much in the way of any detriment. And and the law prescribes that any detriments must be substantial. Uh, because to reasonable, people can disagree whether something's detrimental, that's why there's a higher standard here. Uh, by simply occupying the residential space, um, with a new site consistent uh with would currently exist in the building. And the character of the surrounding area, um, and and having no parking issue as testified by the traffic engineer. I don't see any detriments. Uh, um, firstly, in terms of whether or not there's going to uh be impairment of the zone plan, the zoning orders, the master plan. Uh, you know, even though the uh. Zone, uh, the N B zone uh doesn't permit residential on the first floor, which permits residential above the first floor. Um, I don't see a negative impairment uh to the zone claim, given the context of the area. Certainly, uh, my testimony would be different if there was no residential in the area, that would be a probably different fact pattern. But there is plenty of residential in the area on the first floor and there's residential in this building as well. Um, so all in all. Uh, in terms of uh benefits versus detriments, I think there are are certainly uh plenty of uh of of uh benefits that flow. Uh, from the grant of this variance, and if the board doesn't see any detriments, it's my professional opinion that they're not um uh substantial.
Thank you. Any questions, any questions from?
I just do have a question, where are like, are the these, what the residences you said that are. On the first floor, are they right around that area and the windows like on the floor like what Sharon was saying, because that that is a concern. Having having this um. On the first floor, right, right there as people are walking.
Right, there there are, um, I can't tell you exactly how many, I I mean, they. Uh, they all have windows on their first floor and most of them have uh have uh an AC units on the side, um, so they are occupied. Um, most of those buildings are are very old and and most of those buildings don't have, I think. I don't, I I can't say all of them, but most of them um have facades that are older, have windows that are older. Um, certainly, you know, could go for, you know, some upgrades and and some updates. This instance, uh, which which is different in this application is that the applicant uh is proposing uh window permits, you know. New windows to make this a more vibrant property, not just from the aesthetics, but also um having somebody on the first floor, having some uh some activity on the street level. Um, I I didn't see any activity on those other properties, I mean, I I uh I was there at at five P M. Don't know if people were in there or not, uh, but I think, uh, you know, this property, given its its location on uh Shrewsbury Avenue. Um, I I think it's uh. Uh, you know, highly visible property, uh, and I think it's important to have that activated.
Okay, any additional questions for this witness? Okay, any questions from the public for this witness? See, I mean, those have parts. Any comments?
Uh, just uh for the record, Mr. McKenna, are you rested? You've completed?
Uh, yes, I I just like to speak. I I I don't understand anybody being concerned, but on the other hand, you have a property here that is vacant for a long period of time. I don't know about everybody else, but uh I think that. This would be much better utilization, you know, that building and that space. There are three other residences there already. He said zero vacancy codes, they they function fine. Uh, they're undersized units, but they they're fully occupied, fences are. They find parking every every time that they're there. So uh and even when there was space, was commercial space. So parking should not be an issue. So um I'm respectful in support of that. Decision. Not hardly complex in that having a vacant space. Uh, and and burning, you don't mind, the owner was having to continue to carry that space when. There doesn't seem to be anything natural for six years. He's quite a hit and he's willing to invest money into fixing up the space in order to get it on. Um, I just ask the board to put all that consideration in your deliberations.
Sure.
Can I just ask a few questions that we asked?
Sure.
Some information, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't know who would answer these questions, so feel free to answer. Just from our letter dated May twenty ninth. And someone, um. Page three, we know that there's a section of sidewalk on the property which appears to have been repaired with asphalt. We recommend that this section be replaced with concrete, would you agree to do that?
I would do it if there was a section with that ass. I uh took a photo of my sidewalk. And. Didn't replace sewer line many years ago, but there's no asphalt on it.
So let's just mark that picture, that A twelve, and what is that a picture of?
It's a picture of the sidewalk fronting their property.
All right, and Mr. Gorski, was that taken by you?
Yes.
Roughly when?
Uh, it was taken on Sunday.
Okay, so it's an accurate depiction of what exists, thank you.
Thank you. Um, with respect to trash and recycling pickup, where would that be stored?
That's stored in the rear.
Is there space for that?
It's containers, no, but there, yes, it's property in the back that's fairly big, it's a huge piece of property. And they they put it in the back uh adjacent to the building. And tenants. Take the garbage out, they would, garbage can, they take the garbage can out. Put it to the street and let's put it up on the. How it works, it's what that.
Okay. Um. Any landscaping or lighting proposed within?
No.
Um, Kevin, there is a section four ninety dot four and four ninety dash eight point one that requires a fifteen foot wide buffer area. Obviously, this is an existing condition, we're not changing that.
Okay.
Just wanted to know.
Perfect, we'll note that.
It's it's in the notes.
Thank you.
Um. We also uh noticed during a site visit that the rear R needed some maintenance and cleaning.
Uh, that was just cleaned this week and I periodically do clean it. Um, some tenants, they should clean it, but when they don't clean it, I clean it at charge.
Okay.
Well, you said you're cleaning the property.
A property match, yes.
Are there any other alterations proposed within the other apartments aside from this one?
No.
Uh, any mechanical equipment that you're going to? Be installing H V A Cs in support of this?
No, I'm going to utilize the existing H V C system that's in uh in the space right now.
Which is what?
Um, it's a electric uh. Water.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, any comments by the board? On this application? Okay?
I do have one, I do have comment, I I do have an issue with the size and on the first floor. Just, I mean, I know, you know, like Sharon was saying, we're probably going to end up, it is a hardship, but um. I don't know, I it it's just, I feel like also, I know you're doing the parking and stuff, people are there in the day. Like you do a parking in the day, people don't go to work like they used to, they, you know, why, you know, living here, you see the parking, you know? Um. It is, it is a hard thing that it hasn't been rented. Um, but I I just, it it is, it's a hard thing, I'm. Concerning for me, it is.
I I have a comment. Um, I too like Sharon and Eileen have a. Discomfort with the size of the apartment. Um, it seems like it's really small. However, um. If you can find a tenant that's willing to accept a very small size. Then I guess that offsets it. I mean, it's not like, if this was a brand new unit, you know, I definitely would not, would never approve a one-bedroom apartment at four hundred square feet, it's just way too small. Um, however, also because there's four units in this building, the building falls under rent control. And I think that's actually a bonus for potential tenant. So I'm I'm sort of torn as well.
And just my, I might add that there's another apartment, there are actually two other groups that are about the same size. And they've been fully occupied with this time also. So I understand your concern about the size uh and 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 share it. On the other hand, they have existing uh units of of approximately the same size that are occupied. On the other hand, they have existing units of approximately the same size that are occupied all the time.
Can I ask how long those tenants have been there?
Since I purchased the building.
Oh, so many, many years.
Many, many.
So they're perfectly happy living there in that space and under rent control, I I can imagine why.
Yeah, they don't have, they don't want to move out.
Yeah.
And I just want to, the reason I'm here is because I continually get phone calls and my tenants call me because I have other properties in Red Bank. And they constantly call me and ask me if I have apartments to rent. I, and they ask me about that space. I said, I can't rent that space. It's a commercial space. I can't do it legally, so I'm not going to rent it to you. But that's the reason I'm here is because I continually get calls from residential. I have a broker I hired to, the commercial space, I don't get one call. And it's not just here, it's other, it's other tenants. I I own a commercial building, one, I have two, it's a beautiful building. I got two office spaces I can't rent, and they're small spaces. They're, it's a eight hundred square foot space, and I can't rent.
I would like to thank you for doing the correct thing of not renting it out and commend you for doing that, because we don't see that usually. We'll have to issue a violation before, you know, it being, the right steps being done. So I thank you for doing that. But to the board's concern about the unit size, their sizes, there is a trend that's going on right now for micro units, micro apartments, which they typically run around three fifty square feet. And it's a more affordable options developers are doing now because the cost of housing is so expensive. It's it's a new planning trend that planners, developers, architects are actually recommending for working-class communities, student communities, because it's it's a cheaper option for them. So that's kind of the, the, I guess, a tenant that you're looking for, someone that is just out of school or, you know, older folks who are looking to downsize. So that's that's, you're going to see that trend a lot coming forward. I don't know if we're going to be adjusting our ordinance to meet that trend, but that is something that it it has been proposed. I've seen that proposal come forth to my office as a concept. And it's, again, it's a trend that's going on in New Jersey that is starting to pick up.
Really, I'd just like to, I'd just like to add that there's two things happening here. First of all, it's the enormous collapse unprecedented in American history, it's depression of the office market in America. It's just profoundly different. Most people aren't aware of it. I can't even explain it to my wife. She doesn't understand what that is. Second, the majority, the west side and the east side of Red Bank profoundly different. The majority of the units on the west side are rented. There are clean units, most are rented. And there are hundred, two hundred single-room people on the west side, living, sharing houses, renting a single room. That can go a size of a thousand dollars a month, room in a shared house. And there's tremendous need for housing on the west side. And I have feelings about the size. I wouldn't want to live on the ground floor front on Shrewsbury Avenue either, but many people do. And they also don't have a choice. And they want to be in Red Bank. So it's important to understand how different housing uses and the rental ownership mix and the size mix is from the east to the west side. It's very, very different on the west side, other than on that block of River Street. And and I have all of that in my computer on it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for all of your comments. It's important. I think we should move on and either make a motion to approve or deny this application. And myself, same thing, I I think there is a need for this type of housing. And I'd rather see a building with somebody in it than empty. I don't think that does anybody any good. So I would make a motion to approve this application. Per Mr. Kennedy's list of things.
Okay. In the event the application's going to be approved, some of the conditions I would suggest, subject to your review, would be compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations the team made. That's my way of saying if I miss it right now, if they said it during the hearing, it really counts. Compliance with the T and M Associates Review Memorandum. Compliance with all affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, getting all necessary permits. And we're going to come back momentarily to those front facade comments about the windows. We'll come back to that. We usually have a twenty-four-month timeframe within which, after the resolution, you have, I need to get permits, obtaining all necessary outside approvals. And I guess, Shawna, because it's, they need the county planning board at least approval or a letter of no interest.
So if they do cite.
Oh, well, okay, that would, if it if it applies, if you if you need county, if it's applicable. And now I guess the routine maintenance, as referenced, I guess that's been taken care of, the testimony indicated it's been taken care of. Jackie, I think your office asked for an updated survey.
Correct.
And compliance with ADA regulations. And I think Jackie, your office also said, fire office needs to review and approve it for emergency access. And then some of the other things that talked about tonight were, all right, for the updating those, changing those residential windows and doors for the A eleven document, preliminary floor plan. And that was last revised July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. With a further condition, Shawna, that you want the windows that were on the top of that A second story, A eleven document to be the same as the lower level.
No, the lower level, the opposite.
I'm sorry, so.
Lower level to match the top.
Lower level to match the upper, the upper level. You know, that's what I had. I'm sorry, I read it backwards. Okay, and then we're going to have.
Kevin, I thought they were going to be smaller windows.
Yeah, smaller, but same design look.
But the ones that we see on the rendering now are how big? On the architect, how much smaller are you going to make them?
Oh, the the ones that are original, the windows are about, it's about seven foot high on the floor.
Seven foot half, like twenty by thirty.
Your original storefront, we're removing. Yeah, those windows are going to be about three by four. Three by four, three-foot ceiling. This one right here is, so these.
This is only four feet?
Yeah, that's four feet. These are the old, these are the older.
The concern about looking into people's living rooms, I think, is valid. So, you know, there should be smaller windows.
But if that concerns somebody, wouldn't they get shades or curtains? Some people like big windows. I love big windows.
On a storefront, but it's literally sitting right on top of the sidewalk.
So what what which works better then?
Like maybe half the size of the windows shown.
Windows there are small.
And then do that, or I could do tinting on the roof. I could do several ways to make privacy.
What do you think?
I don't think, I don't think we're making it any better for the tenant, giving them a bigger window when you, when you're this far from the street. Just, you're on the sidewalk, you're just not making it better. I mean.
Or I just do a two-foot window like this, two by six. So you don't, there's no way they can look in. You gotta remember the sidewalk.
You need a bigger window to.
You have to talk to the fire marshal.
Yeah, talk to the fire marshal. Yeah, I think you need a bigger window.
Another window on, on this plan, there's a window in the bedroom.
Right.
And that, looking at the place that was supposed to be the massage school.
Yes, that's what, those, those windows that are right here, the ones that are put in right at the corner.
To me, a bigger window with tinting to ensure that no one can see in. To respect the tenants as a good in between.
Right.
Because it's nice to have windows. I love windows.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
It's keeping the privacy, but you'll never be able to see anybody inside. And I think that's the way you should do it, keep the window big, you get plenty of light. Now, at most, you know, the tenant will probably put a shade there anyway, but at least we'll get aesthetically over.
Now, I had initially had two, three-by-four windows that Shawna to review and approve the details, but we're changing that to a bigger window with tinting?
No, it's either the size he proposes or.
Three by four.
Just slightly smaller, but I think cutting it in half, it just looks really bad, especially on a storefront. I mean, if you look right, that building right there, the storefront, I mean, it's not complete right now, but it's it's horrible. They removed, yeah, they removed the storefront windows and put in these tiny windows. And it just, it makes.
So are we saying two, three-by-four windows?
Three by four, that's what you were proposing?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have tinted.
And tinted?
You tinted, yeah.
Got it. Thank you, Vince. And, oh.
At the survey, we did some end user.
Okay.
Shawna just got.
Okay, I probably did.
Got it, thank you. And then we have, obviously, compliance with Building and Construction Code, prevailing Building and Construction Code requirements. And and then Jackie, I just, you'll take a look at that sidewalk repaired with asphalt, replaced with concrete, that's if necessary. If it's done already, then it's, or it doesn't need to be done, doesn't need to be done. And then Jackie, you want to just confirmation that there's no other alteration to other residential units approved? And comply with any prevailing occupancy regulations that that Borough and the state have. So that was the list of of my potential conditions. I defer to my friends on the board. And and again, Mr. Chairman, this is a use variance application. And just for the, some of our newer board members, remember with the use variance application, only seven people vote. And there's a, it's not just a simple majority with use variance, you need five affirmative yes votes. Just rules of engagement, so to speak.
I'll second his motion.
Ann Torrey?
Yes.
Gray Mass?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Yara?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
No.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
And Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Hey. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So.
Second? All in favor? They're all in favor.
No, I don't. One of your, I want to say. Vince. Those are called micro apartments?
I think we're all on first.
I'll second it.
York, I mean, it's like a hundred and seventy-five square feet.
And actually, you know, when you watch some of the shows, the house are not bigger these days.
Then again.
Actually, basically, if you find a tenant for.
I mean, it's up to him.
I'm about to release it for them, so you sign.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I recognize that.
I I pulled it up on.
You have to deal with this, and then, I mean, the reality is, then. Whatever you do.
When I pulled it up.
I'm Airbnb.
I recognize it. I mean, I drive by it every day.
Yeah, well, if you look.
That neon.